I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hello, I'm Jayden Martin, I'm a senior and I'm on student council.
I'm Greta Hudson and I'm also a senior. First student council, last two weeks ago, we had a boo bash and it was one of our best turnouts that we've ever had. It was a really good opportunity for the community to come and all the kids to go trick or treating since the weather was so bad on Halloween. And we're gonna have a meeting here in the next few weeks just to talk about fundraising ideas for the winter and to do, plan our winter assembly. That's what we've got going on.
Looking at colleges?
Yes.
Did you have any candy left from the boo bash?
I don't know. I'm not sure.
Do you know approximately how many came through? Do you have any idea?
I don't.
Because the line was down the road.
Yes, it was insane.
I think we figured around 900.
Thank you.
That'd be one of the better turnouts, I bet.
Good idea. Good night.
It was a good night.
Alright, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, public hearing.
Alright, we'll get right through this public hearing. Let me bring this up this way. Okay, in accordance with the section seventeen dash two of the Illinois school code, we have to have a public hearing anytime that we transfer funds. And what we're looking at, what the district will do this evening is transfer funds from the operational and maintenance fund to the capital projects fund. And so, here's some background information. On September ninth, the board did approve our FY twenty budget. And included in that budget was this $1.5 million transfer from operations and maintenance to the capital projects fund. And this is to pay the remaining balance on the abandoned course in Pitches project. This was an information item in the October fifteenth board meeting, and a legal notice was posted in the paper in compliance with what the school code has on. And so, as a reminder, this is the public hearing. There'll need to be a resolution that follows after this, that the board will need to adopt after they close out, or is in preparation to close out the hearing. And then later on in the meeting, there will be an action item to authorize the transfer of funds, and so that's an action item. So, that's all I have from the district side, so I'll turn it on over to the president to conduct the rest of the hearing.
Alright, do we have any comments from the public?
For the...
No, for the resolution.
For the hearing.
I mean, you can help us too.
Go for it.
Alright, I have no comment. Do you have any comments from the board? Alright, so do I have the motion to adopt the resolution authorizing the transfer of funds from the operations and maintenance fund to the capital projects fund of Washington Community High School District number three, Tazewell County, Illinois, as presented?
I recommend that we adopt that as read by the president to the board.
Alright, and then I think we just need the roll call. Alright, roll call. Knob singer?
Yes.
Big man?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Visitors and correspondents?
Visitors and question.
My name's Kurt Reynolds, Allen Brunk Sports Center up on square. I'll make this short and sweet. We're looking to start trap shooting, an IHSA trap shooting club at Washington High School. It's a non-sanctioned sport right now through the IHSA. It's still considered, they still have state competition in that. When you bring in guns in schools, it automatically throws a red flag. I'd like everybody to really strongly consider reading and doing a little research on it because the guns and that, it really doesn't, I need to use the name of the school, not to have anything at the school. We have two clubs that are willing to sponsor us. The Pheasants Forever organization's willing to fund us. The NRA is willing, Friends of NRA, is willing to support some fundings on this also. And I have the policies and procedures that are followed by IHSA. With me, I brought you guys a copy. If you go online, maybe you should have quite a bit more. You guys can all have a copy. My name, phone number, address, and all that is on the back. I just, I live up by Lincoln Grade School. We have enough kids right now to start this in this school district. Ty Saloniger's kids would be involved, John Geis' kids, Russ Chang, his kids would be involved, my kids would be involved.
Thank you.
The number one deal on this is safety. There would be no guns allowed at school, there would be no ammunition allowed at school. And honestly, if we had meetings up here, which we wouldn't have to, the gun club has a nice building to have the meetings in. Do you want one or are you still got yours?
I'll take one, thank you.
I'm just asking the board to consider it at this time. My information's on there, if you guys want to sit down and talk, I can answer any questions you want. There is stipulations in here. Brentfield currently has one, Canton currently has one. Elmwood is starting one this year, Chillicothe, Midland is starting one, Princeville's starting one right now. In the realm of drug testing on that, I would point out, every student in this program is drug tested. If they fail, they're not in the club. It's that simple. There's no second chances in the club. With the firearms being involved in that, each student would have its own coach. John Geis is going to be the team coach. But each student, through Peoria Trap and River Valley Sportsman's Club, both clubs would probably have to be used for the event. River, or Peoria's Heat Trap already has a youth program in place that we would combine with. Since it's an unsanctioned sport, there's really not a co-op. We do have one student at Morton that would like to be involved in this, and it's as simple as Herb signing a paper and their athletic director sign the paper, and the student comes on board.
I have a question for you. This is just play, pigeon trapping, shooting, or is it other gun type of?
Strictly trap shoot. There's no travel involved. It's done on the computer, you're scored, you can't play favorites. You either hit it or you don't. So, the best shooter, which is usually the females, are listed on the computer, it's ranked through the IHSA, through the state, and that's how the judging's done. And Mike, as far as females go too on this, it's a hundred percent scholarship to the colleges. That's one of the highest rated, outranks basketball, football, everything. If you can shoot, you're in with colleges, especially the southern colleges. We've got two local kids that are already visiting colleges down south.
Now, you mentioned that there's no travel. Now, I've lived out of state at times, and the local school district actually there did travel to, I believe, Nebraska for some, like, US-wide tournaments. Is that something that the IHSA is involved in? Is that down the road?
That would be down the road, because right now, it's not a sanctioned sport. You go to Minnesota, they've got over 14,000 kids trap shooting up there. I mean, this is huge up north, it's huge in the south. We're kinda, you know, everything comes from the coast and moves in. So, that's kinda where we're at. Just, I mean, Brentfield's had it for two years, Canton also, and what, you've got five schools applying for it this year. So, it's a growing sport. If Washington allowed it, then you have Metamora and Morton that are gonna be right there, definitely Metamora. Because there's, I mean, Metamora's a bigger hunting community, they have a lot more farm kids. So, you can almost guarantee that that would happen. But we can allow any of those kids to sign up until they get a program in place, provided we have permission.
Is this fall or spring?
It's a spring sport. Right now, they're shooting both. It's up to the kids, whether they want to shoot in the fall. A lot of the kids we have that want to shoot right now are in band, so it wouldn't work very well in the fall. So, a lot of our kids here are in the band, as of right now. I mean, with it not being announced and made public.
I think Herb, did you tell me this was an emerging sport?
Yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about what that is?
It's considered an emerging sport, and I'd say, there's lots of, on the emerging sports. And by that is, I'd say has guidelines, but there's no postseason like a state championship. There's no regional, sectional, or state championship. They just have, we would follow underneath their guidelines as a school district, as an eligibility, you know, things like that. And pretty much, trap shooting would be at the trap shooting club, and they would, they would be underneath Washington High School as their sports name or activities name. That word, he was saying, if there's a kid from Morton or a student athlete from Metamora, there's really no co-op since it's not a postseason sport yet, then we can accept them. If it would ever become a postseason sport, then it would be considered a co-op. But, pretty much, what he's asking is getting underneath the school, shooting, you know, as Washington Community High School trap club, and we would follow the guidelines that I'd just say has right now. There's about ten or twelve different emerging sports that are underneath the guidelines of that I just say, but no postseason, like bow hunting's there, there's a couple other ones that I can't even remember right now.
Yeah, Metamora has archery right now.
Yeah, archery, yeah, archery, yeah.
And it's a growing, a growing sport.
So, we would have to work with the club that he's with, and they would pretty much...
There's some stipulations. Yeah, eligibility would be a big one, and the drug, where right now, everyone is randomly tested, this would be, you would have to be tested. And if you fail, there is no second chance, you're out.
How often is the testing?
It's at the beginning of, honestly, it would be when the school states it is, but, I mean, I know the school has to...
Is that through your gun club, the drug testing?
No, that's IHSA, it's in the rules. They'll give you one, you need one of these. Definitely.
Jeez.
But it's in, it stipulates in here. It would be up to the school's discretion, if that child failed the drug test, what would happen. In our eyes, and in the club's eyes, if they failed, they're done. There's zero tolerance. It's just like, they, you know, you can't possess, a child can't carry a gun in their car or anywhere until they're 18, and that's only a long gun. So, you know, and they have to have hunter safety courses to do this, which the club would provide, and there's also an IHSA state test online that they would have to pass before they're even considered.
So, I know when we talked, you said the participants would have to supply their own shotgun, they'd also have to supply their own ammo. But that brings up an interesting point, how do you get that transported to where you're shooting?
We would actually be, the parents are gonna have to take care of that, that the child can't carry the weapon or the ammo. It's illegal by the state law. But what it would be is, we would pick them up. I mean, I have multiple shotguns. There's gonna be kids that are gonna go out for this that don't have a shotgun, and the members of the club are going to supply that, and the ammunition, and the clay birds. And like I said, what we would do is, I'm going to write an NRA grant through the Friends of NRA. We would purchase a safe, we would purchase some shotguns, and birds and ammo, and that would be kept locked up at the club. That's already been approved by the club. What we didn't realize was the extent of how big this could be, so Peoria Skid has offered their club awesome. So, I mean, it's, it's a very popular sport. There would be, you know, set practices.
So, just to wrap this up, so really, it's no cost to the district at this point? You just wanna do it kind of under the umbrella of our school, and then probably a little bit of work for Herb to make sure that this is all?
Yeah, the, as far as the grades, I mean, you know, the grades and whether they're eligible or not.
Right, which is good. Like we do for other, we've got other book sports, right? So, however we need to operate those. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, we would have contact through email, or however you want, I'll run up here and talk to him.
Alright, does anybody else have any questions? Well, we'll let you know if we have any more questions when we talk about it. Thank you.
Like I said, it's on the back, just get hold of me, I'll be more than happy.
You'll be worried by you.
Thanks, guys, appreciate it.
Okay.
Yes, so, in honor of School Board Members Day, 2019, which I believe is November fifteenth, we have this nice table of goodies, so please make sure you get some cookies. And I have a little token of our appreciation and recognition, so, a nice little beach of your name on it.
Thank you. We like the presentation. Yes, we really like it. Alright, do we have any other visitors and correspondents? Okay, then we're on to six reports, six point one, the dean's report, put one on enrollment.
Okay, well, dean's report, you have enrollment, you can see, which I can't even, about this. Yes, looks like, looks like it's 1295. So, I think we're down five hot five kids, but, you know, you get that transfers in and out over the course of the year, so you get a little out of the flow. I think last month, we were at fourteen even.
Alright, anything else on that? So, six point two athletic report. We've got a lot of that stuff.
Yes, and you have a copy of that, I think Mr. Knoblock has put in the records, how each level of the teams, how they succeeded, and you can see it all in there. If you have any questions, Mr. Knoblock is here to field them. Do you want to hit any highlights? I'm sure there are a couple out there you might want to...
Yeah, we had a really, really good fall this year, and just finishing off, I want to talk about cross-country a little bit. It was a great day on Saturday, a lot of records were broke, I mean, the state record that held for fifty some...
Forty-seven years.
Forty-seven years was broke, and actually, Jackson Ward was, finished up high enough to be first team All-State. The two girls ran, they did a very, very nice job. Middle Line was very well represented. If you remember being at the Ward stand, they give medals one through 25, and Leinster was up there, Morton, Metamora, us, Dunlap.
East Peoria.
Was that, East Peoria had a runner, yes, yeah. So, very, very well represented, boys and girl side. The only big highlight, you know, of all of our athletics are up there, right, you can read, but the last page, I added a parent seat video to our online registration. So, everyone who registers online, they sign off that they watched the video, it's from the NFHS, it's just kinda some reassurance or redirect for parents on how they're supposed to be conducting themselves with their student athlete, with the coaches, and at a game. So, we added that this year. I also took 14 students to the, I'd just say, leadership conference, it was in East Peoria, had a great speaker down there, they had breakout sessions, a lot of it with the bowling, and the, and how to become a leader within your, your school, your sport, your activity, your club. I think the biggest thing they get out of it going down there, and the three coaches that I took down, they get to go to breakout sessions with, there's probably 300 schools down there with so many different other kids from across the state, from Chicago down to Cairo, Illinois, and they got to talk with, with kids that way. And that's what I like about conferences, it's, you know, talking with other people in other school districts, and they got to do that all day long. And then, last one was the coaching staff development. I talked with Dr. Freeman last summer, I was able to get him in. He is Associate National Federation Executive Director, he speaks all across the nation and a lot of states, and he came in and talked to our coaching staff about bullying, social media, and racial sensitivity. What to look for, how to take care of that social media, especially the social media because it's ongoing and growing. What should you be doing as a coach, what should you be doing as a parent? So, that was really good, that was a good night. Other than that, it was a great fall, and I just came from all the practices, and the winter's gonna start up. Get ready. Thank you.
Alright, six point three, financial report.
Okay, I've got quite a few reports here, so I'm just gonna zip through a couple of them, and then I'll finish up with this annual financial summary. I've got a presentation to give to the board. So, here's our investment report. I want to point out this number here, this $1,080,000. There will be an action item later in our agenda. This is different than the fund transfer, this is an abatement of working cash funds to the capital projects fund. We don't have to have a hearing for this because we had a hearing to issue the bonds. Because the bonds have been sitting there for this purpose, we're just abating them out of the working cash fund to the capital projects. But there will be an action item later in the agenda. I think these are the exact same reports because our October meeting was late, so we had, were able to capture the September for the insurance costs and that, so that information's straightforward. Here's the expense report, it's pretty tough to see that, but we're tracking at 34% total expenses. It's about right where we should be, and when we take a look at the operation and maintenance, we're considerably less, but once we have that transfer of 1.5 million, that graph's gonna change a little bit by the time we get to the next month. And then, let's see how we're doing on our revenue. Total revenue received, 64%. Most of that has been through our general levy, so with the general levy, we've received 92%. And of course, the state reimbursements and all that are coming in. And so, you know, state revenue's just right where it should be, federal revenue always kinda lags. But, those are the general reports that we have. I'm gonna hit this one as well before I get to the annual report. Each, each year, I gotta give an update on where we're at with our bonds, and so, here's your quick one pager, it's front and back. We currently have six bonds that are outstanding. I like to point out this DCEP, that's the debt service extension base. And if you wanna, wanna know what that is all about, this little blurb right here tells exactly what that, where DCEP came from. And it ties back to when Tazewell County became a tax cap county. So, basically, there's a magic number, ours is $661,000, that's our debt service extension base, and it's for all of these funds that are limited funds, the, excuse me, limited bonds. I attached to that, the back page, here is our schedule R, it's basically our payment schedule for all of our bond issues. And that $661,000 is the total maximum that we can have on all of our limited bonds. And as you can see, this number highlighted right here below this, this is our debt service extension base, we have to stay underneath that. That is our non-referendum bonds. And so, we can issue additional debt without having to go to referendum. And so, currently, our total capacity right now is this 609, I believe it's 49,000, which falls underneath the 661,000. What does that all mean? It means that your DCEP, you can bond out to that, you can't go over it, we're underneath it, so that's right where we should be. But if we had to issue some additional debt or do some restructuring of debt, we'd have a little wiggle room, we could take on some additional bonds and just extend that out, but we can't go over that 661,000. Now, that number does change based off of the CPI each year, that the CPI adjustment gets added onto the top of that. So, that is your bond update. And like I said, each year, I try to give that to the board so you can see this. So, now for a more formal presentation, this was presented to the finance committee this last week, and I'll fly right through this, but this is a great presentation that I stole from Tim Custis. He was the originator of the worksheets behind it. It comes from a large Excel sheet, and so, we will get started here. Not gonna go into detail on that, if you want a paper copy of it, I have a couple extra if you'd like to see this. But basically, I take our AFR data, and I load it into the spreadsheet, and then we generate some of the more colorful graphics. So, this is our 2019, year-end, 2019 operational, or operating revenues. So, you can see that 68% of our total revenue came from real estate taxes. The evidence-based funding, that is really nice, it's up to 17%. So, where we're at, total state sources is right around 18% of our total revenue, and so that is a slight increase. I'll show that to you here in this slide. So, you can see where our real estate tax revenue over the last five years, and then this is what I was referencing with the evidence-based funding, this is contributions coming from the state. And so, when I first got here, the trend was going down, the state, the state contributions were declining. It is really nice to see that Illinois has stayed consistent with the funding of schools, and the evidence-based funding model has really been a nice welcome. You can see where our federal sources is very minimal, we only get about 2% of our total revenue from federal money. On the expense side, this is the spreadsheet, or the spreadsheet that captures all the information, but this is a little bit better graphic to analyze where our expenses, and these are out of our operating funds. 76%, three quarters of our total expense comes from salaries and benefits. And then, you can see where supplies and purchase services and tuition, other objects, capital outlay fall. That capital outlay is a little bit bigger, that slice of the pie is typically a little bit smaller, but we have made several 5,000 series purchases, all the additional chairs, those are capital outlay type... those are capital outlay type project, or expenses that have hit that. So later in the agenda, there's gonna be an item about the band visual aid information that it would be a capital outlay expense. Okay? And then we've got our operating expenses, and you can see where we're at. When you take a look at salaries and benefits, what we have to keep in mind, these bigger increases are directly related to the addition of staff members, not necessarily the salaries going through the roof, but it's, we've taken on more people to run our operation. And that's on both sides of the house, that's the support staff, that could be anyone with transportation, and also our, our just regular instructional staff as well. Our purchase services have remained flat, and most of the other objects have remained somewhat flat as well. So here are some of the, the final graphics, I really like this, this tells a great story. One line is our revenues, that's our top, and then the other is our operational expenses. And this is nice when we can maintain a gap between the revenues and our actual expenses. Okay? So get into the next one. This tells a huge story, I mentioned this at our morning staff meeting. I love this graph because it really captures our trend history. This is our average daily attendance, and it tells a great story. Most schools in central Illinois do not have this kind of graphic in their average daily attendance. And you can see where, where our trend is going. It'll eventually level off, and that will be a nice thing. But this is, this is the source behind all of our additions that we've done, okay? This is another great story that I love to share with the board about our district. The black line is the operating expense per pupil for high school-only districts in the state of Illinois. And so, we gather that information by going through the ISB website. And so this, last year in 2018, the state always lags, we don't have 2018 data yet. But last year, it cost, on average, $17,749 to educate a high school student in the state of Illinois. And then you can see our graphic, which is in the orange line, and it actually dropped this last year. And that is, that's great. If we can factor in all the students that are coming in, and operationally, the cost per pupil actually goes down, that has really been a nice trend. And so, really proud of that graphic. Here is our assessed value. The question is, is what year did the tornado hit? You can see that on there, all right? It does portray a nice trend, and if you'd follow this pre-tornado trend line, I think we would still be below the $500 million amount in EAV. So the tornado does, has been a benefit for our EAV in the city of Washington as well. We're almost done here. Here's the tax rate. And the tax rate has seen a slight increase going up. I think that's indicative of taking on the additional $3.5 million in bonds. And then later on today, I'll be doing a presentation on our tax levy, going through the estimates, and I'll hit kinda the, the taxing authority, the, you know, in a tax cap county, in preparation for the December actual tax levy. So this is our final slide, this is actually tied to one of our board goals. This is the operating fund balances. And so as you can see, in 2018, we carried a huge spike in our fund balance. That was because we were taking on $3.5 million of additional bonds that we had issued for the project that we hadn't spent. So as you can see, our, our balance has dropped quite a bit. The yellow line, I believe that's yellow, is our 180-day trough line, and the red line is the 90-day trough line. And this is, those are just graphics that, this is, we could still operate for 180 days based off of our operating fund balances. And so we're well above that, and that's, that was put in by, you know, a couple committees, finance committees ago, and, and adopted by the board. So that is a real nice graphic to see what we have in fund balances and reserve in comparison to how long we could operate, okay? That's a lot to throw at you, and that's the finance report. Any questions?
Really, all of that comes from the philosophy of our finance, of our financing, doesn't it? Of the administration, the board, about how we handle our money. I see, I, this, I know we've added on and added on, it looks, you know, extravagant, spending a lot of money. But on the other hand, I think this board truly has, in the time I've been on, a conservative philosophy about maintaining a pretty balanced budget, keeping our revenue and our expenditure within careful proximity. That doesn't happen accidentally. None of that happens accidentally.
You're right, there's one word, purposeful. I think everything that we do, I mean, and think about our own lives, you know, you go to get a cup of coffee, well, you could go get the super expensive cup of coffee, or you could go to the, you know, the real cheap place and get a cheap cup of coffee. And I think what this district does a commendable job of doing is it balances everything out, and everything's purposeful. And so, nothing too extravagant, but then it's not bare bones. In school construction, when we went through all the school superintendent classes, they say, "Build it for 50 years." Well, the district's got a good reputation now, the band, the old band room, you know, the 60s, okay? Now we've got this one. It should take us the next 50 years in the down. So that's, you know, you look at our Tory Gym, that was built in the 60s, so we've gotten 50 years out of it. So we've done a really, really good job maintaining the things that we've, we've done, and I, I really do think it all comes from the direction of the board, and, you know, over the last, I don't know however many years, it's just having a really good plan, because then we can communicate that all the way up and down throughout our entire organization. So there's purpose for what it is that we're doing.
And we've added that part where we have done research to anticipate major maintenance expenditures too. So we're not caught off guard.
Yep.
And it's been well researched and documented.
I did give a presentation to the Central Illinois Facility Managers Group on our Designated Funds Project. And I'm, I'm gonna try to get that on the schedule to present that to the IASBO Conference this, this spring, and then if that goes well, possibly put in a request or a proposal to the triple I to do that project. Because really, the, the people in the room, I had a lot of people coming back to me saying, "Wow, that is really good, we wish that we had something like that." Because it ties, ties everything together. It's being resourceful, but also having a communications plan to put that out there. And, and letting your constituents know what it is that you're doing with your money, and you're just not, you're not stockpiling money, you're setting aside for these future things.
Long-range planning.
Yep.
You know, and, and just to kinda follow on Lori there, I mean, a lot of what you're doing is using data to, to plan, and without that data, you can't plan forward very well. And then you're also using it to tell the story. And in that same way, I think the board's made a lot of moves to use data for educational purposes as well, and, and so I think, you know, just that kind of data used across all that we do is very useful.
Well, I'm maybe looking for someone to be a presenter with me next year if all goes well, so any on the Finance Committee who wanna do that, can knock it out. We'll get Manny on.
All right, any other comments? Okay, on to Board Committee Reports, I think we only had a couple committee meetings. Finance, I think, I think we got them covered, does anyone wanna add anything to that? All right, and then we had a facilities meeting.
Basically, what we did last month. We had, we had PJ here and present some of the punch list items and what they're pushing up on some of the projects, and what landscaping and outside lighting that they're working on, and a few of those things. We also did talk about the upstairs new classrooms that are being constructed, and what classes would be in there, and what would benefit. We did come up with a $66,000 unknowns that came through that time, so we discussed those thoroughly of what that was exactly, and how that was gonna be paid for, and where the money was gonna come from for that. And then we just, the unknown conditions, and I'm gonna think if there's anything else.
Just future planning, what we'd be doing with that.
Is there anything else on that? Is there anything else I missed?
So that was basically what we tackled, and landscape would be done when it's timely, right?
So they got a little bit more to do. We went out and looked at the band room, and it's all vetted, I can't believe we fed everybody in there, even though mine's all open, you still, still.
So true.
I think that was a good meeting.
All right, anything else?
We had a PAC meeting. Lori and I were at that. I was extremely impressed by what the teachers during the PAC was. For an after-school meeting, I thought they had an incredibly worthwhile conversation about how they're trying to help kids who are having problems. I mean, not just freshmen, but also the PAC was, was just individually great, so I was very impressed by how people. And how broad it is.
Yes.
Teachers from various areas are all coordinating and working together to make this go across. It isn't just the PAC, it's how all these other helping areas play into it too. It's something that they're always looking at to improve, that's what I found out of constant evaluation, how can it be better, what have we learned? So that, that was really the purpose, and I, it was impressive.
It's really expanded since the beginning of PAC.
We're gonna need to begin tomorrow, so we'll see what happens this morning.
All right. Discussion and informational items. 7.1, resignation of T. Gardner, Robotics Team Head Coach.
Trace Gardner. Kate, I see you.
Resignation of Jay Hurdus as something supervisor?
Student supervisor. She's been here for a long time.
What's a student supervisor, just a?
She did a variety of jobs, a lot of times, and let's see, one thing she did, which she helped was across in garden, she also helped oversee some of the study halls.
So she spelled it in a little bit earlier.
Yeah, kind of helped watch lunches at times, yep.
And let's see, 7.3 mid-year, and mid-year, three-year, and five-year graduates.
So you have a document in your pack that just kinda talks about, and it's board eyes only because it has me in front of it. But it kinda talks about the number of kids that we're looking at as potential midterm graduates.
And that's about standard that we see?
Pretty close.
So January dropping enrollment, we don't know why.
Yes, that's right.
For good reasons. 7.4 business position.
I'm actually, okay, when we get to 7.6, I'm gonna hit this a little more in detail. So the quick version of this is, we're gonna need to add a business position next year. The reason for that is what we've talked about with transportation, we need to decrease the amount of time that Mr. Reiser is in business classroom and increase the time he's working with transportation. The demands of the state just keep increasing and increasing and increasing. So we'll talk about when this position is needed, I think we have a good plan going into next year, I think we're really probably looking at for the following year, but I'll show you the whole spreadsheet.
This is in addition to our regular staffing plan we have? Okay. 7.5, course changes and additions.
Dual enrollment program, so we have been working with ICC. They approached us for the potential of a dual degree program, so a student could potentially, in their junior and senior year, finish out their graduate requirements for high school and earn a, up to a associate's degree out of ICC, so they graduate their senior year label. And this would be, this would be the extent of the Strong Start program. And I know we've been talking about Strong Starts since I came onboard, and we were increasing it a little bit at a time. And we're, we're at the point now where we're adding that last piece. I, I do not believe that this is something that every kid will want, this is, it literally means you're taking almost all of your classes over at ICC. We did negotiate in a couple things to save our kids a little bit of money. If we had a dual credit class here, they could possibly take the dual credit class here for $50 instead of paying ICC's full tuition. So there's a little bit of cost savings there for our students because of that partnership we have with them. But they go through then a full associate's degree program, and we were washing through everything. So part of what you're going to see is that conversation occurs with our Curriculum Committee in talking about that final leg of the Strong Start program. Once that's in place, I think we've covered the gamut of everything you can do as a high school to provide extra credit beyond high school. You know, other than adding a few AP courses here and there, some things like that, this is kind of the pinnacle of what you're gonna do.
Are there other schools that already have this in place?
Yes, as a matter of fact, District 150 picked it up, they're paying the full cost for their students, I think they're in a little different situation than we are. And so we're, we're, I don't think our fam, most of our families are in a position, if the student's interested to do this, that's affordable for families, and there are good tuition rates at ICC, and we'll decrease costs from taking some dual enrollment classes here, I think that, that even narrows that down.
So if a student was doing that, he's in a low-income family, would it possibly get more aid at ICC?
That's a, that's a discussion that I think, we've talked to ICC about that, and I don't know that that's.
It's possible.
Yeah. Okay, so that, that is definitely something we can discuss later on, but I think you have to be a little bit cautious in what you do because being able to, I mean, we just got done looking at the whole financial picture, so if you take 30 students and pay their tuition to college, you're, you're putting, you're taking a chunk out of that.
Like a financial lady, but a policy.
I think that's the problem, because of the dual enrollment, there was some sort of issue tied to FAFSA and their ability to, to use that grant funding.
And I'm guessing Peoria might go through the Peoria promise, so it may not even come through District 150, so it's not, it's not, that's my guess, but I don't, I don't know that for sure.
No, that is a, you're on that.
So I think that the 150 kids actually can go even when they graduate and it's paid for somehow, like that.
They've changed.
A big scholarship, and it's pretty good.
It's also made more restrictive when you start it out.
Yes, that's what I'm saying, they've changed.
Wide open, a lot of kids didn't complete anything.
So this is really gonna enable our kids to either Strong Start, go as little or as much to ICC as soon as they want.
We had that conversation today, and they had been really talking about that, that they could take one class every year if they wanted, oh no. I mean, obviously, when they go, they could go to ICC and take a class, or they could go the other extreme and go through their entire junior senior year, mostly over at ICC and earn an associate's at the same time they're finishing with their high school.
Right, get some lots of options.
There are kids out there that might be interested in that. Been down this before, this is not my first iteration of this program, it actually was something we started in Muscoa, and I do know that that's a pretty finite, you know.
But still, nice to have it.
Yeah, it's nice to have it.
I would like to, I wasn't part of any of this, but I'd like to compliment you guys on accomplishing this, because less than 15 years ago, I wanted to take one class at ICC, and it was a really big deal, and there was a lot of paperwork, I mean, I eventually wasn't allowed to, but this is a huge stride that has been made in not that long of a time, because, I mean, I was initially flat, I was told, "No, we, we can't do that, we're not." So, major progress, props to you guys.
So I think this year, we have a pretty small number of students that are doing it, but last year, I think we had around 10, 12, or, no?
No, we've been under 10 for the last two, three years.
So, under 10 the last two, three years, that took, and a lot of them will take a couple, so they might, they might spend half their. So, they might, they might spend half their day at ICC and half their day here. I think we saw some of that.
So, if somebody does this like full-time at ICC, do they still count for our ADA?
Yes.
That's what I was going to ask too.
Yes, because we get the enrollment report, that counts for what we do.
And we still have obligations, like, I mean, because I have a couple in my classes that are teacher and I have to send reports back to...
We also, if they are interested in the HSA, in which they could still participate even within this program, we have to have that. We have to have grade checks and we have to have attendance checks and it has to be monitored pretty frequently, so.
I think it's a good opportunity to, especially to try and see if kids will take advantage of it because it is, it's a great idea if they really want to see it through and are mature enough and be ready to make that jump.
And so, is the main benefit really that they, two birds with one stone, is that it just compresses it for them? I mean, that's really the main benefit.
That's me.
Well, and I think options, every kid's good, what they, you know, some kids...
Some kids...
Get out.
Yeah, some kids are, yeah, they're ready to go.
I have a niece who graduated after junior year and is finishing up med school in a couple of years. So, it depends on the kid and what their desire is and what they want to do, you know. And I'll tell you, I was the first time with sister, my sister, that I thought that was a bad idea and I've since changed my story and said, you know, it really did work out for her. I was wanting her to get up there and not quite have that maturity level, but her personality was such, nope, she stayed right on top of it and has done. If you're getting into med school, you stay on top of these grades, so.
Well, we, I remember, we had some in our family who graduated mid-year because they were very anxious to get to ICC and they had all their requirements. If they could have done this, they'd have another option here.
Well, it may be, where I think I see a lot of benefit is a kid that wants to do something that we don't offer here. Mandarin Chinese comes to mind. So, if somebody wants to take a language that we don't offer, that's a possibility for them. They have the ability to go to ICC and take that foreign language. I think that was the intent from the beginning, was just to be able to open the door a little bit and provide a little more for our students. I will say, we offer a large number of dual credit classes and really because of the cost effectiveness of those classes, we get high numbers of students who take those, more so than will take us up on Strong Start. So, we're trying to hit it from every angle. That's, that's the most important.
All right, anything else? All right, now the district staffing plan.
Yeah. Dr. Sanders, you mind kicking the plan up for me real quick? It's just, you can just kick it right off of there.
Hi, there's no blank.
Oh, there's no blank. Wow, that's going to make it exciting. So, anyway, you can see it on there if anybody has a question.
Yeah, mine.
I got it.
So, here we go. If, easiest way to put this one, the...
Karen's going to send it.
Sorry, I did not notice that that wasn't put on. I consider it so if you, because I actually...
Whoever won that.
Whoever finds it first.
Yep. But if you'd like a cookie, we have a cookie.
Please step over and grab a cookie.
Yeah, Michael kept one, it'll hold on right away.
It's on its way. The gist of it is, within that, within that plan, you'll see the former plan and I'll talk a little bit about that while it's still making it to there. And if you remember, three years ago, the plan, or we had put a three-year plan into place. And so, we were looking at the third year of this plan coming into place and we started shifting it out because we saw, we saw the increasing enrollment, but it wasn't to the degree that we thought it might be. Okay? And so, last year, last year, we shifted from the initial plan to this updated plan. There it is. And so, in FY19, we hired special education teacher, social studies teacher, part-time RTI, part-time dean. So, coming into this year, we hired a Spanish teacher, a science teacher, and a counselor. That was all part of the plan, but we had talked about adding an English and a math teacher. And so, we pushed those out to FY21.
Were those based on enrollment?
Yes. And this was the original plan, okay? This was the original plan. So, if you scroll down...
And these are all additions, they're not replacements?
Yes.
The top part is.
The top part is. The top part is. The, the bottom part are replacements due to retirements, okay? So, this is the FY19 plan and as you can see, now all of a sudden, it's a science teacher and a counselor instead of all the other positions that we've talked about on top of that. And we shifted out English teacher, math teacher, and we're going to evaluate FY20 for FY21 and evaluate English teacher in FY21 for FY22. So, what we are looking at for this coming year is this particular scenario here, okay? We're talking about hiring a, why does this not look great to you?
There's one more.
Because there's one more. That's why, because I mean, last year's, this is FY20. So, here's what we're actually talking about. It's this third sheet. This is what we were proposing that we hire this year going into next year. We need another math teacher and another Spanish teacher. We're at a point where Spanish teachers are almost all on overloads. And we talked about this, if you remember, part of the reason we talked about the staffing plan was, when you're paying overloads for an entire department, you're paying a lot of extra money. So, this is to bring people back into what the base load should be and open up the ability for more PACs. We also happen to know that this is a good time for both of these positions as we get further down the road into a teacher shortage. We want to make sure that we have a good pool of candidates. It's better to do these hard-to-fill positions earlier rather than later. And we can look at English teacher and try to determine, is this something we are going to need right away? We're pretty confident that we can get through next year with our English staff. We've talked with them. We feel pretty comfortable with where they're at. We can keep the class sizes at a minimum and still provide what we need to do. So, these are new teachers that we brought on this year. This is what we're proposing to hire as new teachers for next year. This one we will evaluate. And as I said, because we're looking at our enrollment and because it hasn't spiked quite to the degree that we saw four years ago, that it's flattened out a little bit, we're able to do this without overloading, overtaxing the system too much. Now, replacement-wise, we do have a couple of things that are coming into play. We have, these were our replacements last year. So, we had to replace two special education teachers, a family consumer science teacher and an English teacher. So, we have an English teacher retiring this year and a math teacher retiring this year. So, we will need to replace both of those positions. So, you'll see us hire English and math and then a second math as a new teacher. Okay, that's how this is working. So, these are the four positions that we're proposing to hire. But let me preface all of this with, we always get surprise resignations. So, there could be more hires, but that would be tied to a resignation. Okay? Julie, have that look like that?
No.
Okay. Just making sure, I want to make sure everybody kind of understands because I, I went into the, went into this kind of battle. So, then we're going to look at English teacher as a potential, as a hire next year going into the following year. We do know that at that point, we'll need a business teacher because by then, we're going to need to move Mr. Rizer out of the classroom full-time and we will definitely have to fill that position, okay? Welding and auto because we have a retirement coming and PE because we have a retirement coming. Okay, I threw a lot of agit. There have to be questions because I confused myself at one point.
So, this isn't dramatically different than what we've seen?
No, it's not dramatically different.
And then the part-time RTI and part-time dean, we're just going to keep those part-time?
For right now, for right now.
Because are some of those people like just kind of yearly?
RTI for sure, we'll probably stay part-time, but we really have to look at that dean position. I just haven't, haven't looked, I haven't talked administrative right now because I wanted to stick to where we are.
But those, those people are okay at a part-time?
Yeah, yeah, both, both of the people that are filling those positions are...
Aren't they retired?
Yes.
So, they may or may not want to, they might want to retire sometime.
Yes. But I will tell you, if the load that we have seen come through the dean's office this year continues, you're going to hear me saying, we better hire a dean soon.
And then we would get rid of the part-time.
Yes. Because it is, it's been heavy this year. It has been heavy this year.
That's, that's very time-consuming, very time-consuming.
Yes.
I have a question. So, one thing always comes up with the overload on teachers, we don't want to have the teachers have so much overload that they get tired of their job and expectations is more than they should have to do. Is there any of that going on with the teachers that they're, it's okay to do overload for a while, but you know, year three, you're like, I'm tired of the overload, I want my normal job back.
We're trying to monitor that as much as possible. I will tell you that there are teachers that want the overload, okay? And actually fight against a PAC because they want the extra money that comes with the overload. But we do watch that closely. Everybody here is aware that we are looking at, and we've, we've had very open conversations with the faculty about the fact that we've, we've got this bubble coming that we need to get through. And so, one of the conversations we had early on, and part of the reason I put the three-year plan into place was for the purpose of saying, we're going to hire people, yes, but we're also going to utilize overloads so that when we start to tail off on the backend, we aren't firing people, we're just taking people back to their regular schedule.
Well, we just don't want teacher burnout, we want them to continue to...
That's correct.
That they're supportive of them and not expecting them to do more than what they're defined on for.
That's correct. But the other thing from the teacher's end is, you don't want to hire somebody in and three years later fire them. Okay? So, everybody's willing to handle that overload provided they see a light at the end of the tunnel. And we've been very clear about that because it is difficult. It's difficult on a staff when you bring people in and they become part of the family and then all of a sudden, you're releasing them. And that's, that's what we've been trying to avoid. And that's been a strong conversation with the union, with the staff about our philosophy on how we want to do things. And everybody's in agreement with that. I don't think that's been an issue with the teachers that I've, I've talked to have been very supportive of that.
Want to check in?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. It's one that I think we have to monitor because you don't want, you don't want a high level of burnout, you know? So, what we've looked at was the tail end of this because we also know that as you go, there will be, there will be retirements down the road and those then, if you drop into, say, the 14s, the 13s, as far as student population, can be absorbed without a release of anybody and they can also, they can also bring that back down to a good teacher-student ratio. So, it's all of the above tied together. The business position is the one that's sort of new because of our discussion of moving teacher to transportation director. Okay? So, that one's, that one's a little bit new, but it really is a replacement because as Kurt gets the age where he's going to retire, then we need to be able to fill that position.
I think what comes here is there's been a lot of thought and communication and a rationale for these positions. I mean, replacements are obvious, but the needs, potential needs down the road at various areas has, sounds like it's also been well thought out, not only in your office, but through other levels of the school too, in, in talks and, and discussions about projected, projections of enrollment, of retirement, all of it together. And so, when there's a good rationale and these, these are brought forward, I think it's clear why these positions are where they are.
Go ahead. So, as, as we look at this, and here's the simple way to put it. So, you can see, this is the original recommendation that we brought to you three years ago. And you can see where we are. We had a Spanish teacher, science teacher, counselor, English teacher, math teacher coming in FY21. So, those were the two positions that we were going to hire. What we ended up doing last year was keeping the science teacher counselor and moving the Spanish teacher over a year. So, you can see the flow of this. You can see how this has been kind of moving to the right and that was all based on student population. So, the Spanish teacher, we moved over. We did hire a science teacher and a counselor. This year, we're still looking at a Spanish teacher. We do recognize that we need a math teacher, which we said we would evaluate for FY21. This is FY20. So, all of this is in line with what we've been talking about the whole time. Okay? If that, if that helps at all, it's just kind of seeing how that's played out. And the only shift has been tied to the student enrollment, which was looking and kind of more went like that. So, it wasn't quite as high.
What kind of overload? And so, when we talked about this last year, we had, and for English teachers, we had an overload of like between 15 and 17 courses, I think?
Number of courses?
Uh-huh.
You would have to have that many people in the department to have that type of overload? I don't think we have.
It was pretty, it was pretty high. And I mean, it was...
It was high, but it wasn't a, are you talking semesters or are you talking four?
Semesters, not, not yearly classes, but semesters.
I don't have that on here.
Because I remember it was pretty high. And I mean, I just worry especially with English because that's a very grading-intensive course, you know? If you want the writing reviewed, that's just a lot of work outside of class, right?
Yeah.
And, and I mean, I just, what's that, Claire?
I was just talking about three people here involved with either being an English teacher or married to an English teacher.
Yeah.
To know the grading level that goes with it, the nights, late nights of grading paper.
But that would mean almost every teacher had an overload, every English teacher had numbers like that, right?
I mean, is, I mean, I don't, I don't know. I mean, Karen, do you know by chance?
That was, that's, that's not accurate.
We have five of our English teachers teaching PACs right now and our class sizes average
between like 24 to 25, so that, I'm not quite sure where you're getting on.
Do you know how, how many total we have in the English department?
11.
So, so about five of them are teaching PACs?
Six teach, well, one teaches a block class, five teach an overload, five have a PAC. And then our class size is around 24.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not saying what it was. I'm saying from my recollection.
Yeah, yeah, I understand.
So, PAC is considered an overload?
No.
No, PAC is...
An overload is teaching...
They're guaranteed through the contract, either a PAC or an overload, one of the two. They get one via the contract.
So, PAC is the dual, teaching together and the other overload is an actual class, correct? More than their hours that they put on.
Yes. Yeah, so, an overload might be a general section of English. The PAC would be the dual teachers and the, it's, it's, a lot of times, people want to put it as a study hall, but it's not. It's kind of a bunch of things wrapped together to provide a lot of direct support for students that need it. It's aimed a lot at the freshmen, but you also have sophomore, junior PACs.
But there wouldn't be grading involved so much in...
No.
So, I didn't realize PAC was an overload. I thought that was...
No, it's not. Or saying it's not.
Oh, it's not.
So, here's the way the contract reads, okay? They're guaranteed five preps, which means five classes. Then they get a prep period to prepare for those classes and they're guaranteed either a PAC or an overload for their seventh.
Got you.
Okay? So, it's one or the others. That is written in the contract that way, that they're... That is written in the contract that way, that they're guaranteed that. So, not every teacher looks at an overload as an overload.
Okay.
Okay? It's just what we call it because of the five, five section there.
So, how many English classes are we overload right now?
Five. Five.
Five, okay.
So, so we still have five that are not, you know, and we don't want to get to a point where we have seven or eight that are in overload. You know, that's because we still need to be able to do that. That's why I think we're looking at that English teacher. We're, we're going to keep evaluating.
Yeah, I mean, you're right on the edge because five would be a full teacher. So, if you hired somebody and then we declined in enrollment, you'd have to release that person.
That's, and that's where we're at. And part of what we need to see is when we get into the spring, I mean, the only thing that might change this is if we get into the spring, January, February, and all of a sudden, our English numbers have spiked and we see an incredible need and we're going to have to overload a large number of English teachers, we might come back and say, okay, so based on student requests, we need to reconsider something here. But I don't foresee that happening. We're, we're pretty solid here. It could happen, but I don't think it will. Right now, this is our good, solid plan based on what we're seeing.
Anything else on that? Okay.
So, you'll see action items as we go to hire those positions.
All right. Seven point seven, appointing member for resolution committee at the conference. That's, that's our delegate, basically?
Yes.
That's what we're talking about?
So, the reason it's kind of a discussion item is you don't need an official motion for it. And really, the last couple of years, it's, it's boiled down to who wants to do it.
I've done it the last few years. I'd be willing to give it up to anybody that'd like to try it. If, if not, I don't mind doing it because I do enjoy it.
I've been there, done that.
But it is interesting. I like to watch the Robert Rule Order. I like to have the different discussions and, but Bonnie, if you'd like to try it?
No, I really wouldn't, but thank you for offering.
So, Jewel?
I think I got voted in because I was born that one year.
Yeah.
Kind of stuck, but...
You were God, but you did say, I would be willing to do it if nobody else.
It is a true. Last year, we did have the Army Administration Discussion, which was pretty intensive. And then they had newspaper and reporters, which I very much stayed away from, interviewing how your vote went, so.
Well, this year, the guidance teachers issue is coming up.
And I did read the resolutions that's coming through, so take the time. If you guys do decide to have me be the delegate, then please read through and if there's any way you want to vote, I'll go through and say kind of what I'm going with and like to have a longer discussion, not just to vote how I would vote. We are a team, we all get one vote, so.
All right. Jewel, do you get that?
Right, I'm excited.
Well, but I am official. I have official paperwork.
Pass that now. I'll read up on the time.
We'll make sure that we get that information off and...
Take the better.
What is it? I think it's a dislocation. All right. Central Almoy Invest?
All right. Dr. Freeman and I met with Matt Maile and Clay Eunice with Morton Community Bank. This is a new money market option that they presented to us. Here's a one-page sheet on it. What we could be looking at doing, I, we said, we put this as an information item, is some of the dollars that we have set aside in our fund balances, we could roll those into this money market account, which would draw at about a half percent higher interest rate. So, there's really no risk. You're still allowed like six transactions a month. Well, we would never have more than like one transaction a month and all that has to be board-approved. And so, it's, it's just something that, we'll put it as an information item this month. I will get the official rates by the time next month rolls around and we'll get that loaded up. But I would recommend that we look at it and, and take the designated fund balance amounts for future projects, which is sitting probably at about three and a half to four million dollars, that we could roll that into this money market.
So, real, real quick math, for those of you that are wondering, half a percent on three million dollars is about $15,000.
And no risk?
No. No, they're all secured. That was one of the, if you read through that, we, they actually kind of developed that for us and we asked them to put a couple of things in there. One of them was how they secure their investments. So, it does talk about how those investments are, are secured.
All right. Anything else on that? And other? I was just going to make a comment that they banned, did a performance. They couldn't play at U of I, so they came out here and performed and was really well attended, given the fact that they have what, maybe 24-hour notice? A lot of, I was surprised how many community members came out. People said, you know, they maybe wanted to see the band, but they didn't really want to go to a football game and, you know, pay number one and fight the traffic. So, I thought that was neat. It sounds like maybe they're going to continue, make that a tradition? I don't know if that's right or not.
It's good PR and it's good for the band.
Like I said, it was really impressive to see how, I mean, like you couldn't park.
Yeah. You know, so.
The weather was fairly...
The weather was, I mean, it was cold, but it wasn't like...
Today it's cold.
And I think the kids enjoyed it, particularly the seniors, because then they could really have time for working with their old friends. So, I know.
I would say the kids seemed very excited and...
I think they enjoyed it.
And having, having been to a few of their competitions this year, it was one of their best performances. I mean, it was rock stuff.
And I, like I said, I think the community really enjoyed it, so hopefully they can...
Very good band here.
What?
Very good band here.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, they had a good...
They had a rough time before it really performed on that.
So many things.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think they decided maybe not to go anywhere where they didn't have turf anymore. I think they really appreciate our turf because of the weather. And then I didn't realize that, that the chalk lines get worn down. So, we were last at one of the performances and that was the only thing we got dinged on is because the kids said they couldn't see the chalk anymore. So, it's nice that we have that turf for the kids. So, all right. Okay, on to the consent agenda. Eight point one, our minutes. I'm just going to go through it. We have a, can I just step in?
We need those to eight point two.
Oh, and bills. So, I need a motion, I guess, to approve our consent agenda, which is eight point one-one, the regular board meeting minutes of October 15, 2019. Eight point one-two, executive session meeting minutes, October 15, 2019. Eight point one-three, facility committee meeting minutes, November 1, 2019. Eight point one-four, finance committee meeting minutes, November 4, 2019. And eight point two, our bills. Do I have a...
So moved.
Second.
A motion and second? Any comments? All right, roll call.
McNutt?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knopf Singer?
Yes.
Motion passes. On to nine action items. Person, nine, nine point one, personnel, nine point one-one, leave of absence request. Do I have a motion for, let's see, nine point, I can't put all these together. Okay. Nine point one, point one A, approve the leave of absence request for Trish Gardner, a business teacher. A motion?
So moved.
Second? Second. Motion and second? Any comments? All right. Roll call.
Warren?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knopf Singer?
Yes.
McNet?
Yes.
Essing?
Nine point one, point two, employment of certified personnel. I have nine point one, point two A, approved employment of Nicole Beard as a long-term sub. And nine point one, point two B, approved employment of David, is it Crossall?
Yeah.
As a long-term sub for business department. Do I have? I'm sorry, what did I say? Oh, I'm sorry, Nicholas, sorry.
That'd be okay. Both of them have, have, I mean, David Crossall was a longtime teacher here at the district, so he's been here a long time. Nick Beard has worked with us a lot as an aide. He's worked as a coach. He's, he's going to do a fine job.
Stand up.
All right. A second? Second? All right. A motion and second? Any other comments? All right, roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knopf Singer?
Yes.
McNet?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
All right. Nine point one, point three, employment of non-certified personnel. Nine point one, point three A, approved employment of Matthew Freeman, long-term sub. Nine point one, point three B, approved employment of Sandra Simonson, full-time food service worker. And nine point one, point three C, approved employment of Vicki Tucker as a part-time food service worker. And that's it. Do I have a motion?
Motion. No motion.
Right, roll, please, second? All right, a motion and a second? Any comments?
Matt has actually done quite a bit of long-term subbing for us in the media department. He's done a good job. And we interviewed both Ms. Simonson and Ms. Tucker and we think they'll find a job in food service area.
All right. Roll call.
Knopf Singer?
Yes.
McNutt?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. Nine point two, approve fund transfers. So, I guess we have a recommendation to the board to transfer 1.5 million from the operations and maintenance fund to the capital projects funds to pay for maintenance and improvement work involving district facilities. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second? Any comments? Roll call, please.
Essing?
Yes.
Warren?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knopf Singer?
Yes.
McNet?
Yes.
All right. And then nine point three, approve the 2019 resolution estimating tax extension. So, do I have a motion that the board, do I need to read all this?
Basically, it's this recommendation here. If you just give me, I'll do this in one minute or less. By law, we have to have a estimate of our FY-21 expenditures. And so, I've, I've listed that here. And as you can see, like working cash, we're not going to do any abates, planned abatements, no capital projects next year. So, it really drops our total expense down to where it should be from, say, 27 million to 21, 22 million. So, we have to do that. Additionally, we have to give an estimate of our 2019 tax levy. Our CPI was 1.9%. So, that means that we can levy 1.9% above last year's levy. And so, when we factor in what our expected new growth, which that came from the county, was $5 million, a new property that is just hitting the books for the first time, we're not, we're not capped at the 1.9% on that so that we can extend our levy beyond the 1.9% for new property. So, when you take all that together and you throw it into the formula, and I'll show you the levy sheet here, what the finance committee is bringing forward is a total aggregate levy increase of 4.956. If you're doing the math in your head, how can you get from 1.9 to 4.956? We actually over levy because we don't want to leave any dollars on the table. So, the reality of actually having a 4.9% increase on our tax levy, I don't want to say it's, it will never happen, but as long as the AV stays the same, it cannot happen. And so, last week, we presented, this is our tax levy estimate. And it has, this yellow column is what we are requesting as our estimate levy for 2019, which I'll do a formal presentation in December. But it's a total of 13,555,000. When you factor in our bond and interest, we get a total aggregate levy increase of 4.956. And so, with that, there's a resolution that the board must adopt. And that's what this action item is, is to adopt a resolution saying, number one, then that you, the, the board has reviewed the expenses from, for FY-21. And then also, that we'll be bringing forward a tax levy. And the reason why we have to do this, because if it's over 5%, we have to have a truth in taxation hearing. Our anticipated levy is going to be under 5%, so there's no truth in taxation hearing. And so, basically, the motion that needs to be considered is that, that the board adopt the attached resolution right here estimating the tax extension and whether or not we need to have a, a public hearing, which this resolution says, no public hearing is necessary.
Okay. So, do we have a motion to approve the 2019 resolution estimating the tax extension as presented?
I move.
Very well said.
All right. Motion and second? All right, roll call.
Fisher?
Yes.
Knopf Singer?
Yes.
McNet?
Yes.
Essing?
Yes.